...appreciate your service today.
All right, we will now go into opening comments by members of the board. I will mention Supervisor Ubinoyt is traveling this week and not be with us today. So with that, any comments Supervisor Ashley?
My mic, oh yeah, my works.
They're working today. Let's keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you, thank goodness. Yeah, I'd like to ask Fire Chief Hawkins, pleased to come up and report. We had two, one major, two, I guess, two major fires in the fifth district. Both were handled very well by our very capable fire department, which I complimented before. I'd like to hear the details of what went on, just all that happened over the weekend. It's very difficult terrain.
Good morning, thank you very much Supervisor Ashley, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, this is Walt John Hawkins, Riverside County Fire Chief. I'm honored to give you a brief update on the fires, which in a nutshell are in very good shape and nearly out. You're very correct Supervisor Ashley, Saturday afternoon was a very dry windy day, and a fire still under investigation started in the Potrero south of Beaumont, south of Highland Springs. The winds at that point were 12 to 13 miles an hour, gusts to 15 to 17. They were northeast Santa Ana wind, and that pushed the fire quickly out of the Potrero and up over the mountain to North Mountain. Because of aggressive firefighters and firefighting from air and ground resources, we were able to hold it, where it right on top of North Mountain, and I'm very proud of that. That fire burned 2,200 acres, and it topped North Mountain in about three hours. So it was a pretty quickly burning fire. It is much more dry than maybe some people believe, and the situation is ripe for more fires, even though we have a marine influence on top of us this morning. Above that marine influence, it's very windy and red flag warnings have been posted. Right after the Highland fire on Sunday morning, we had another fire near Mount Edna that burned 15 acres, and we were able to quickly get on it. And then the real troublesome fire occurred called the View Fire, named after Desert View in Virginia or Hogg and Lehman area. That fire started Sunday night at about nine o'clock, and it quickly ran under heavy winds down into Whitewater Canyon. And our OES Deputy Director Peter Lent was out there on the ground along with Riverside County Sheriff's deputies, and they were able to affect, at 11:00 PM, they were able to affect the evacuation of 15 residences, and I'm very proud to report that they had them back when they were out at 11:00 PM and back at 7:00 AM, and we had the fire wrapped up. These fires were brush fires. It wasn't over. Yesterday morning, we had a third alarm apartment house complex, two-story apartment in Desert Hot Springs. It was a very difficult fire, went to a third alarm, that stretches even thinner. However, to conclude, the successes of these fires are due to, as you've heard me say this many times, our integrated cooperative regional fire protection system that this board has strongly supported for public safety. And you should take great pride in that because we're able to be successful because of the county, the cities, and the state components. Supervisor Stone, you should be very proud also for the work that came out of the Hemet Riot Air Tank Base. The state has had three air tankers there because of some difficulties with federal air tankers, so the states had three air tankers there, the feds had rented a tanker from us. We were able to quickly hit the Highland fire, and that made a difference from the fire slopping into the San Sono Valley. And lastly, I'm very proud of our firefighters. Thank you very much.
Chief, just a comment. Great work Supervisor.
Thanks again Chief, I know you really are doing a great job of getting on these things and attacking them in a way that minimizes their spread and minimizes damage, and certainly I think the record shows it. Fortunately, we haven't had any loss of life here in the county for several years now. It's because of really proactive measures that you take and all the training that your staff undergoes and all the firefighters out there that lead to the fore, so the public really appreciates it. Having said that, I know you're really busy now, but I'm probably not telling you anything that you don't already know, but there was a recent report released that said that actually some of our earlier assumptions about heavy brush around homes and structures may not pose the hazard as much as grasses do, and that the best indicator of where there's danger to structures and people are in areas where they've already burned before. In other words, in the windy corridors or in other certain locations where time after time there are fires. So if, subject to your review of that report, I take it it was a fortative, it was an objective study, but I'd like you to have a look at it when you get a chance here after the burn season's open, and see how it can better inform our efforts here in preparation. Maybe it can relieve some areas of having to go through heavy brush removal efforts every season, but perhaps it can help pinpoint what we do in certain areas and then help our planning efforts in the future as well.
We'll be glad to take a look at that, you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then another comment, not the chief, but this, late last week, we were informed by email that one of the things we count on here in a county that's been kind of under the radar screen financially here, as part of our heavy dependence on redevelopment, was the remaining issue of what are called redevelopment pass-throughs. Those are amounts that come to the county through various city redevelopment agencies that are structured on individual agreements. And there was talk that these pass-throughs, which constitute $114 million of our annual budget in aggregate, could be at risk with the state sweeping them up to cure their budget deficit. Now, we've had discussions here recently about how much value, how much of our stressed budget should we be putting into our lobbyists at the state level certainly and at the federal level? I think the amount of, what is it, about, in the aggregate, about three quarters of a million dollars we spend on lobbyists annually, something on that order has been questioned, and I think correctly so. It should be justified, and we should, as we recently talked about the ambulance contract, we need to, every couple of years, look and see whether there are ways to make those efforts more competitive and more cost-effective. But just over the last week, we had a good illustration of what the worth of lobbyists can be, and apparently our lobbyists in Sacramento were able to quickly get the right information, and I take it put some active pressure on to at least stay off this possible sweeping up of any or all of the $114 million that our county budget is so dependent on. So it's hard to put a value on that amount, but certainly paying for lobbyists at times like these is well worth some hundred thousand dollars if they are successful and if they give us early warning about such unexpected major threats to the county's functions and budget. Anybody from staff, George, did you have anything to add to that?
Well, we obviously appreciate those comments, and in addition to our lobbyists, I think the staff and redevelopment agency, as well as the executive office and county council's office, all really jumped on this matter quickly. We worked closely with the leadership at CSAC, and I think combined, I think we were able to at least temporarily hold off this attempt to raid those funds, but you know, the budget isn't quite done yet. We have a lot of trailer bills to come over the next couple of weeks, and we'll have to see what comes out of that. So we'll keep our eyes on the mark and make sure that we protect as much county funding as we can.
Okay, well, we've covered our board comments, and we just covered our executive officer comments. I'll talk a bit about the state budget and as it relates to the passer agreement. As you know, they did pass the budget last week, the legislature, primarily so they can continue receiving their paychecks as part of the requirements today. They are still at least $250 million behind in how they're going to adjust that, probably a lot more than we're not told about. The issue with the passer agreements, I think it was Wednesday when this came to our attention by surprise through CSAC after having a discussion with Senator Fein, excuse me, Senator Steinberg and Assembly Speaker Perez. Obviously, that is not helpful to us. CSAC went to bat thankfully to ensure that that would not occur, immediately talked to the governor's office. I talked to the governor's office on Thursday. They've assured me that this is not something the governor supports. However, they still have a $250 million gap to make up here in the redevelopment pass-through issue. It just proves to me that the state has no idea what they've gotten themselves into in terms of redevelopment, the dissolution of redevelopment, and the process by which all of us on the local level go through to ensure that we can continue to rebuild our communities where they're in need. So we'll see what happens, but I do feel strongly that we are getting the assurances from the governor's office that at least he will not support that. We'll have to see what happens when they get down to push comes to shove in the final budget passage. That's about all we have on the state budget. They do have some very, very good news to report. As the board knows, and as most of you in the county know, Riverside County's Workforce Development, Workforce Development Agency, our centers throughout the county have always done a tremendous job on behalf of job training, and I think we're probably one of the leaders, not only in the state, but in the nation, and that's been proven just recently, as of yesterday actually, where our workforce, EDA's Workforce Division and Riverside County Workforce Investment Board received a $6 million Department of Labor Workforce Innovation Grant. That is a tremendous amount of time, or excuse me, a tremendous amount of money that is needed at a, probably the most critical time to help target kids, eight, excuse me, young adults ages 18 to 24. These are individuals who are not in school but could already be working and serving in the military. Again, 600 of these adults will be served through this $6 million grant through Riverside and San Bernardino and Imperial Counties. They'll receive life coaching, career planning, education, and work experience opportunities to increase their ability to finish school, obtain vocational skills, and get a great job. At a time where our kids, and I'm sorry for using kids, old guy like me, we call 18- to 24-year-old people kids, these young adults, again, will be serving, 600 of them, but the unemployment rate for the young adults currently in three counties is 30%. So this $6 million will come in handy, and Rob, I want to thank you, Felicia, and your entire staff for doing such a great job. Obviously, got the attention of the federal government when it comes to providing these funds for training, so good job, thank you. Thank you. Any further comments Supervisor Ashley?
Yeah, just to like to ask a question. We've heard about the possibility of $3.2 million from the Department of Interior to pay for the services that we provide, the government lands, federal lands. Do we know any more about that, that $3.2 million?
Yeah, I saw the article this morning's newspaper as well, and we're still going to have to try to find out some more detail on that.
Just maybe see if that's actually real. We do, yeah, hope it is.
Okay, that completes our comments by members of the board. We will now go into our calendar and analyze and clerk for any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, and welcome back, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, good morning. Additions are items 3.56 to 3.61, deletions item 13.1, I'm sorry, 13.4, corrections continue item 2.11 to June 26, 2012, continue item 3.10 to July 31, 2012, and a note to take item 3.53 separately.
Okay, thank you. Keisha, I will move approval of the admin action calendar and the consent calendar unless there are any items to be pulled from the consent calendar. Second, motion in a second, please vote. Motion carries for zero. Now taking us to our policy calendar, any items to be pulled by members of the board?
3.45 and 3.58.
3.45 and 3.58. Supervisor Buster.
3.9.
Okay, that's been pulled by a speaker. We also have 3.2 that has been pulled for comments by a speaker. All right, so with those items, I will.
Mr. Chair.
I'll do that one. I'm sorry, for whatever your name's not showing up here. Well, we have sound, but we're not having cueing issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to need to abstain on item 3.29, 3.32, 3.40. I promise to discuss this with these providers.
Okay, with those abstentions, I will approve of the balance.
Second. One second.
Yes, I'll.
Take it separately.
Let's take 3.53, move approval of the 3.53.
Second, motion gives it, I can vote Supervisor Stone. Can't anticipate.
On 3.53, yeah. Yeah, this is on 3.53, motion to approve. Yeah, we had second. Supervisor Buster, Supervisor Ashley, please vote.
Did we finish the?
No, yeah, we're going to go back to the others. Motion carries for zero. So with the items that have been pulled by members of the board on the remaining policy calendar, and two speakers on 3, one speaker on 3.9 and a speaker on 3.2, and with the extensions from Supervisor Stone, I'll approve of the balance of the policy.
We need the title 3.5.
With a waiver of reading on item 3.5.
Correct.
And ordinance of the county Riverside, amending ordinance number 860.9, establishing fees of the county auditor controller.
I second the items of Supervisor Stone, can't vote him. In fact, he's had a big extension, no, he's the ones that he's not anticipating. I'll draw my second, you can second.
Okay, all right. Please vote. Motion carries for zero. Now, taking us to item 3.2, Mr. Mayby.
Good morning, Robert Mayby speaking. I oppose 3.2. I believe it is more urgent to spend the money for fire protection to remove a public nuisance created by Riverside County Flight Control without any permits, blocking 300 feet of the Batista Canyon access road in Stone's district. This public nuisance was documented by Supervisor Ashley last April.
Mr. Mayby, this is on community investment.
I understand that, and I'm thinking that the money could be well spent. I oppose it. I think the money should be spent on something more important in Stone's district.
Okay.
So I'd like to finish, please.
Your point's been made.
The public nuisance was documented.
Not responsive, Mr. Mayby.
Mr. Mayby, your point has been made that you're not in favor of the expenditure, but it has nothing to do with the, has nothing to do with the other issue.
I would like to, I would like to speak.
We're not going to lie to you.
No, you don't want to hear it, you're not going to allow it, are you?
You've made your point. Thank you.
Well, I'll make my point later.
All right, I'll approve of item 3.2. My second. Motion in a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous, taking us to item 3.9. Catherine Bailey.
Just a suggestion, although we have a speaker in the other side. Good morning. My name is Catherine Bailey, I live in Temecula, California, and my family started the first vacation rental properties there in Temecula in 2005. I'm a 17-year resident of Temecula, and I would like to voice my approval over the study that has been compiled in the report that was given. I also want to state that I think that Exhibit A, having had modeled, so to speak, my vacation rental properties in 2006 under the city of Palm Springs, being a 20-year retired banker, when I built my business model naturally, I had to have something to follow, and in anticipation of the ordinances in place being followed, as well as some type of a protocol for my vacation rental business, having gone out to Sonoma, also used here in Exhibit A, and looking at some of the other nearby tourism communities who are very successful in their models. I also want to state that my success of my vacation rental and the happiness of my neighbors has been because of the consideration and the enforcement of the ordinances in place, such as the noise enforcement, such as the dwelling enforcement, and just overall consideration of my neighbors. I'm proud to say that since 2005 and the inception of my properties, I have never had a complaint, I have never allowed minors to rent my properties, and I've never had any code infractions, and I think that that's really something to say because of my family's efforts, because of my communication with my community, as well as my neighbors. I would like to note that the Palm Springs ordinance that's in place has a few key features that I think are important. I think that the fact that they do do a registration certificate is key, and I also want to say that I know myself have participated in the TOT, there is not enough beds in Temecula. And I know about the rest of Riverside County, but I can tell you only speaking from my own backyard, the hotels are wonderful, but there's just not enough beds. When we have wonderful things like the Blue and Wine Festival, we have other tourist attractions that come in, there are not enough beds. Vacation rentals are a different type of animal. It's not a hotel, it's not a resort, it's a place where families come and enjoy quiet lodging. It's a place where families come and have time to visit with one another while they're having a wedding, while they're, not on my property, but while they're having a wedding at one of the nearby weddings, with the wineries or one of the venues that's nearby me. My properties allow pets, my properties love children, so there are things that are totally different from a vacation rental aspect that is desired by tourists. So with over half a billion dollars in tourism dollars generated for the Temecula wine country in itself, I'm proud to say as the past treasurer of the Convention Visitors Bureau, those dollars need to keep coming in. We need to have alternative lodging in our community, and I commend, I commend the board for putting together this task force to put viable ordinance in place. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Laura Comers, followed by, and you have six minutes given to you, three minutes given to you by Christina Taylor. You will be followed by Christina Greena.
Yes, hello. My name is Laura Comers. I live at 21121 Villas Loras. I'm actually outside of La Cresta proper, but I do have a vacation rental. It's across the street from the home I live in, and in the last two and a half years, it has been an amazing pleasure for me and my family to get to meet the families that come from all over the world to be at the wine country and to come to the Santa Rosa Plateau, which I was shocked to find out that people in England actually would travel all the way over here to go to. It is something new for our area, and is something that I think is daunting to some residents because they don't really understand what it's about. But if you look through great communities, Malibu, all the communities that have beautiful places to come to, they have vacation rentals. And we have been from day one registered with the county, and we pay the 10% occupancy tax, and as you are aware, there is about $1.5 million a year that's brought into the county from transient occupancy businesses. The thing that I think that as residents, and particularly we are concerned about, is that there will be some kind of rules or overlays or ordinance put in place that will not really be appropriate for our area. As you know, most of our properties are five, 10, 20-acre properties, and to look at Palm Springs or other places where they do have occupancy and other regulations imposed does not really apply to the acreage that we have in our area. So we want to make sure that we have a say and that something reasonable is going to be done that is, that applies. Like, for example, I have five acres, my property's almost 6,000 square feet, I have three master bedrooms, and to impose two-person-per-bedroom regulations like they have in Palm Springs where most of the properties are on half an acre would just not be, would not be right. What happens at our vacation rental is that we really are catering to families that are coming here, that someone's getting married, or they're coming to Plateau. So you'll have a family that has a member that's getting married in the wine country, and they have people coming from Texas, or people coming from Maine, all over to come to this wedding, and they want to get together as a family in a big estate on a big acreage like I have, and they, we have not had anyone who has been disrespectful of our neighborhood. My husband and I have placed rules on our property, we meet with our renters, we talk to them. There is a rule that no noise after 10. We do not allow anyone to park anywhere except on our property, and I think that to impose 10 people can stay there or 15 people really would minimize what our area is all about. And I think there's some other people that are going to talk about that as well. So in these two and a half years I've had my property as a vacation rental, we have probably brought in over a million dollars in revenue to the county because the many reports say that people spend an average of $84 per person, so I calculate it out, it's over a million, and that's not including our taxes that we pay. We have had women come from all over the county for breast cancer retreats at our property. I was honored to have them there, and any of these new ordinance would have prevented that since it was 22 women, and that would have been above your occupancy. Since then, three of those women have died, but they got to come to my place. I have had renters come from LA and Orange County that did not know about our area. They didn't know that Riverside County was so beautiful, and they have bought properties, and they are now my neighbors. So I think that has brought new worth to our properties, and has brought new friends and neighbors to buy in our area, and they would have never known about it if they had not seen the beautiful pictures of my property on vacation rental by owner. So I think that that is something that we should care about. Is it the board's intent to let the residents and the people that actually own these properties have some input into whatever ordinance is going to be adopted? Can you tell me?
Supervisor Stone, this is your.
It's Supervisor Buster.
Supervisor Buster.
I was going to be, my suggestion that since this issue seems to cropped up in Districts Three and District One, which I represent, that Supervisor Stone's office and my office get together, we can form a committee and go through this in more detail, and first determine whether an ordinance would be useful. Many have suggested that it would be because we have not had the kind of consideration in all, in all instances that you state has been the norm, at least with your operations. But nonetheless, we'll be happy to go over it, and perhaps there are things we can do in fashioning and ordinance that would make it more appropriate to certain sections of the county. But these large areas of large lots where, where in the old days, we used to have raves going on, for instance, in various locations, and the county was, didn't have the population it does today. So there's much more consciousness, particularly when many neighbors have invested a lot in gaining what they had hoped would be a certain, certain ambiance, a certain lifestyle, and tranquility. So there are values in these areas. So there are values in these areas that I think an ordinance like this could help to maintain and strike a proper balance. Supervisor Stone, you have this in a different, different way with regard to the wine country, but hopefully we could, we could come up with some rules here that would be beneficial to, to large areas of the unincorporated county.
Well, you can, you can see my concern about the occupancy because every single place is different. I mean, what if you have a one bedroom, five thousand square foot estate? I mean, we have very unusual properties and to just, just to, without any kind of really looking at it, say, well, you can have two people occupancy per bedroom, you know? To do that and to limit the potential for a family to come and actually have a group with their family that could get together in a home for, you know, during their time while they're staying in the area for a wedding.
There'll be time for all of us, all of us comment in.
I just want to secure your promise that you'll involve us in these decisions before we just get arbitrarily dictated to. That's what I really would like to ask for.
Supervisor, all public processes, that's one of the reasons it's on our agenda this morning when you're speaking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Stone does have some comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I just might add that I'll be working with Supervisor Buster. We have had many examples of disruptions in the wine country by people that don't follow the rules. And I appreciate Ms. Bailey for being here as one that follows the rules. There are many countless examples of disruptions in neighborhoods, large parties, people drinking adjacent to homes that have children, parties running late at night, that are being responded to by code enforcement and the sheriff's department. So we need to put some rules of engagement together and certainly input from those homes that participate in this type of entertainment will be invited to share their concerns with us. We're not bound to shut you down, but I think there needs to be rules of engagement, especially as we embark on a very comprehensive wine country expansion plan that we need to also consider the ambiance and the quality of life of people that live there. So our offices, and I'm sure Bob's as well, are open to any constructive criticisms or problems that you have, but ultimately may happen down the line. We have to still fund staff to work with us on this, which is another challenge for us in the county. But the bottom line is that we'll hopefully have something where the rules of engagement will be universal for everyone to follow. It's not fair that, you know, you'll pay your transient occupancy tax and a neighbor four blocks away, you're doing the same thing, not paying transient occupancy tax, not following county ordinances, it's unfair competition for you. So hopefully embrace the pro-business ordinance that ultimately may come out of all this.
All right. Christina Greena, did I pronounce that correctly? Good. And you will be followed by Steve Taylor.
Yes, my name is Christina Greena. My address is two one three eight four, Lusail, Montana, and that's in La Cresta. I'm an architect and a possible future vacation rental owner in this country. I have one overseas. And I have a lot of the same topics to go over that were already discussed, so I'll try and keep it short. First of all, I'd like to say that I think the rules that we have in place right now are adequate. Yes, we did have a problem up in the area with a rave, or a couple of raves with one particular property, but it wasn't a vacation rental that was causing the problem, it was a gathering issue. And that's really quite different in my mind for renting properties. I understand that we have to allow for common sense, and nobody would want to have the raves right beside them, and that's just really being inconsiderate. So as we discussed, I look forward to working together and coming up with these things in unison because I feel right now, already the rave was taken care of with the rules that were in place, the noise controls, the parking, and so forth. So I think the system worked. And in my mind, it's very similar to the moratorium that we were involved with a couple of months ago, where we already had existing rules and we didn't need to have another overlay. And it's very effective, it seems to be working as it is. I also feel there's always unintended consequences when we add on more regulations, and I think we have to be very careful. We want to be able to be flexible enough that in my case with my overseas vacation rental, sometimes I go there myself, so, and stay there with my family, and maybe I want to have a group and parties and this kind of thing. We have to be able to allow for that. And putting overall rules on these vacation rentals, we need to, I don't know how you would regulate when the people themselves are using it. And I have many of my neighbors that have parties, you know, routinely for two hundred people, and that would mean that we'd have to have all kinds of forms to be filled out. And we bought large properties, and many of us allowed for all the parking and all the other issues, that we would like to continue to do these things. So as I speak for many of my neighbors, we would just like fewer regulations and common sense to take effect.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Greena. Steve Taylor.
Hey, good morning. Steve Taylor. I am a little unusual because I do absolutely agree with some sort of form of, of a rule, a road book that we can all travel. I'm absolutely a hundred percent for the use of these properties, and I have some properties that are very, very large in La Cresta for vacation rentals. We are not like anybody else, and as you know, kind of La Cresta is an eclectic, fun group of people. But what we do want to remember is that there are several things that people have fears of. A lot of them are fears of government, fears of regulation and overlaying and overburdened rules, and they're afraid of which route to follow. So we have some people that rent houses that are not on the tax rolls, the ten percent tax. But if we came up together and put this together that was fair and reasonable for everybody and get the people that are renting but not on the tax rolls, I kind of did a little calculation, it was close to four million dollars a year for the county, for the right reasons. Ranches, as you know, are kind of moving, kind of fun things. They, you know, in the old days, we did cattle. We have a lot of uses for ranches. Communities survive with change. And so we have the old garden in La Cresta that does not want any change, but we know we have to change to survive. So I ask that we all as a community be included. I agree with rules and regulations that are fair and precise, and that people can be not code in trouble. We do have already so many rules in place that protect me as a homeowner. In other words, if somebody's causing a loud noise or something, we can call the police and we can shut them down. And I'm objectionable to that. But these clientele for these vacation homes are a little bit unique and not your normal sense. So having said that, I'm absolutely in support of it, and by the way that I read, I also agree with the hotline. It's a place that normal people can call instead of, you know, the cold thing for the sheriff. So thank you so much. Include us in your process, and we care and we agree with it, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate the published comments. Any others wishing to speak on this item? All right, then I'm going to, Supervisor Buster, you still wish?
Well, I'll just move that Supervisor Stone and I act as a committee with our staffs and will let people know and have a go over the outlines of the issues, the problems that cropped up out there and see what the appropriate, appropriate remedies are. I'm not, I'm not, if there are things we can do short of an ordinance that will prevent problems occurring in the future, I'd be open to that. But I think it's, it's good to spell out standards as long as they're enforceable. Our staffs are hard pressed right now to respond to a lot of these kinds of cases, and I know sheriff staff are spread far and few between at night times when some of these things occur. So we will probably get back to, hopefully within a month, and have a meeting, be an informal meeting, and you're welcome to attend, and we'll have some proposed outlines of the issues and what some of the solutions are. You've already read some of the ordinances that are in other cities or portions of the state that work in this area. You know, changing, changing an area around from residential, from ranching to make it, have a commercial aspect with regard to hotel, hotel visitors industry is, is a, is an important thing. And it, everybody ought to be aware of it, and zoning ought to anticipate that. So this has major ramifications, just like the wine country has turned out to be a very important, very important resource, but, but has to have adequate guidelines and regulations to deal with it. So I don't know to what extent homeowners in La Cresta areas, the loose areas, other areas like this will, will in the future see an economic advantage or need to regularly rent out their residences for vacationers. But certainly that's something that, that I had never heard was anticipated in the zoning that was put in place in these areas. So agriculture was, a number of other activities were, but not this. So those of you who have been engaged in it, I would be very conscious of that fact. This would be a major change to anticipate that any of the home there could at any point have a ongoing commercial feature to it, which is renting it out for vacationers. So, but we will be happy to look at this issue in more detail.